We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening and welcome to the February 20th, 2024 City Council Meeting of the City of Wyndham. This evening, we first have the consent agenda, which includes the council minutes of February 6th, Community Center Commission February 5th, EDA February 12th, and the Library Board February 13th. Also included are the regular bills. Council wish to take action?
I make motion to present the agenda and pass the regular bills.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Motion to accept the consent agenda was made by Scott and seconded by Dennis. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. Department heads this evening. I think most everybody here has a spot on the agenda. Okay? Sounds good. National School Resource Officer Proclamation. And council has a copy of that. I am gonna ask council member Jenny Quaid to read the proclamation. And first of all, everybody has it in their packet. Would somebody like to introduce that?
I would introduce the resolution.
And a second by Jim.
City of Wyndham, 2024 National School Resource Officer Day Proclamation. Whereas the National Association of School Resource Officers is dedicated to making schools and children safer by providing the highest quality training to school-based law enforcement officers. And whereas school resource officers, SROs, bridge gaps between youth and law enforcement and embrace the triad of concept of school policing and serving an informal council education and law enforcement roles to support students and communities they serve. And whereas by training law enforcement officers to counsel, educate, and protect schools, communities, the men and women of the National Association of School Resource Officers continuously led by example and promote a positive image of law enforcement to schoolchildren and school communities. And whereas the SRO programs across the globe are founded as collaborative efforts by police agencies, law enforcement officers, educators, students, parents, and communities to create safe learning environments, provide valuable resources to school staff members, foster positive relationships with students, and develop strategies to resolve problems that affect youth with the goal of protecting all children so they can reach their fullest potential. And whereas, school resource officers are valuable and essential members of the education community and deserve unwavering respect and support from the public in the pursuit of keeping schools and students safe. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishment of school resource officers on National School Resource Officer Day. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Wyndham, Minnesota, that the City Council, in recognition of this day, does hereby proclaim February 15th, 2024, as National School Resource Officer Day. The mayor and city council encourage the community to observe this day and every day with sincere thank you to our school resource officer Dana Wallace, adopted by the council this 20th day of February 2024.
Thank you, Jenny. Any questions? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for a roll call.
Espen.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
And Scott, would you present that to Dana for us, please? Thank you, sir. And yeah, anybody have any comments for Dana while we're on the air? She can listen to it. Go ahead, Jenny.
Sure. I think I mentioned this last council meeting, too. You know, if you've had any children in the last, you know, 10-plus years go through our school system, no matter what age they are, if you mention Officer Dana, the kids will know who she is. She is just a presence at the school that I think everybody recognizes, and it's not even just at the school. You go anywhere in the community and you can see kids react and say, "Oh, there's Officer Dana," and get excited. And she's right there involved with those kids, whether it's playing in gym or, you know, in the hallways, whatever. She is so interactive. I don't think we could ask for a better officer to fill that position. So thank you for her years of service doing that.
I think that's well said. On behalf of the entire city council. And so Dana, we appreciate that and your continued work and all of the department's work in that effort to provide good leadership for our school district. So thank you again. Next, we have a recognition of accomplishment, an honorable mention recipient for the League of Minnesota Cities Mayor for a Day Essay Contest. And this year, many students had sent in applications and wrote a letter. And this year, the school district of Wyndham, Minnesota, has an honorable mention recipient. And Jeanette Juarez is with us tonight, and she has graciously accepted the offer to come up and read her outstanding application. If I could ask you a question first, is... So what grade are you in?
Fourth.
Fourth grade. Okay. And all the students did this, or just...
Just the ones who wanted to do it.
That wanted to. Well, I'm sure appreciative that you took that opportunity to do that. So with that, we're gonna let you read that. I think it's a very good, good statement you have there.
If I were mayor for the day, I would make our safety better by having an emergency button in all houses because our safety matters. What that button will do is send your location and your emergency to police officers, the fire department, and hospitals, and many more important people. Also, we would need that button because if a child didn't have a phone or a device to tell people that they had an emergency, they could press the button if needed. But if a child pressed the button by accident, the important people would hear around the area of the house to check if there's actually an emergency. Lastly, I would have a fundraiser to build a toddler-friendly park for toddlers under the age of four. Other parks are not really made for toddlers, and other parks are made out of metal, and they could hit their head, or they could be too high to reach. So if I could build a toddler-friendly park, I would make it out of metal, but I would put foam over it. I would put foam over it. I would also make it easy to reach. That's what I would do if I were mayor for a day.
I have another question for you because especially that last part. The city council has been talking about expanding and building a new playground equipment. And right over there are two members of that committee that will help them through that process. And I'd like you to, on your way out, after your recognition here, I would like to give, if you would give that to them, so they make sure that they read this, okay? Because I think that, for toddlers, is something we're missing. And that's the first thing that I caught out of this, and your care for younger people, okay? So with that, I want to present you, Jeanette, with the certificate of recognition from the City of Wyndham for the League of Minnesota Cities Mayor for the Day Essay Contest. Congratulations. You're welcome. Don't forget to pass that on to them two right over there. Thank you so much. For the family is here, too. Thank you. You got a great young gal there.
I'm thanking a future city councilperson.
There you go. A mayor. You wanna shoot for the top. Okay. You're welcome. So next, we have Mindot to follow that up. We're gonna have Mindot give the Highway 6071...
Yes.
Yes. Yep. And you could both be up here if you'd like.
You gotta push the button to talk on the mic, so...
Oh, let me catch Mike.
You have to catch Mike. Mike, Mike, Mike. Dennis, could you open that and start it here in a minute?
Sure. Just click your mic.
Yes. We got Mindot here to give us a little presentation, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and I definitely can't promise I've got anything better than we just heard. That was great. I'm Mary Luffler, and I'm a project manager with Mindot, and I'll be the project manager of the upcoming 2025 project in Wyndham on Highway 60. So I've just got a little PowerPoint here to run through a project update, where we're at with the project, what that project includes, as well as what the municipal consent process looks like. Basically, that's what I said, and here's the, just a summary. We'll start with the project update. And so this project will occur in 2025. We'll replace the signal systems at Sixth Street and 10th Street, as well as seal coat and re-stripe the corridor from the Des Moines River Bridge to about 2,000 feet northeast of John Cadwell Drive. And with that re-stripping, it'll be one-through lane in each direction, a center-left turn lane, and right-turn lanes where the geometry allows. So a big thing with that is, I know it's decreasing a through lane, but you're really gaining those turn lanes in return. We reviewed the layout with the street committee back in January, and I think there's some notes in the packet from that meeting. However, the one thing I want to highlight is that, out of that meeting, we redesigned the 10th Street intersection. And so in the review of that layout, we had a lot of conversations around some bumpouts that were proposed into 10th Street and the maintenance challenges that that would have, as well as some implications to truck-turning movements at that intersection. So we kind of went back to the drawing board with the help of the city street committee, and we can remove those bumpouts by extending our right-of-way by about five feet or so into Hy-Vee and Higley Ford, and that'll allow us to move the sidewalk to the north, as well as still have space for the signal system so that those sidewalks can be ADA compliant. So that's kind of the overview of the project as it stands today. We'll get into the municipal consent process here currently. And so you're probably, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with the municipal consent process or if you've ever heard of it. And so just to highlight what triggers municipal consent for Mindot, there's a state statute that Mindot's held to. If you're curious and you want some reading for night, the numbers are there. But just to highlight that, what triggers that municipal consent is if a public street access is altered, there's a change in traffic capacity, or additional permanent right-of-way is acquired. So on Highway 60 specifically, it's two of those categories that trigger us into municipal consent. So you'll see that here on the next slide, that it's that change in traffic capacity, and that is for increasing or decreasing a number of through lanes. And so with this project, it would decrease the number of through lanes to one in each direction. But as Steve has reminded me a few times, we're gaining left-turn lanes and right-turn lanes. So in some areas, you really have a five-lane section instead of a four-lane. So don't let that reduce or decrease scare you. It's not actually a decrease in capacity. Because, you know, what happens currently, for example, if you're driving out there during the busy time of the day, you're in the left lane, you're behind a car that's gonna turn left, so you check and see if there's any traffic in the right lane, you move over to the right lane so you don't get stuck behind them while they turn left. You go down a few blocks, now you have a car turning right, so you switch back over to the left lane. So adding those left-turn lanes really gives a designated space for that traffic to turn and not block that through traffic in the meantime. The other thing is that acquisition of permanent right-of-way. Like I mentioned, some additional permanent right-of-way we'll be acquiring at the 10th Street intersection. And so the next slide shows a few pictures of those areas. So at the Higley Ford corner, I think it's right around four to five feet of permanent right-of-way to move that sidewalk, and then also have room for the signal cabinet there, so that's out of the way. Currently, it's on that southeast quadrant, I believe, by the bank, or, sorry, southwest. And then, you know, if you're walking out there, it's pretty tight. If someone's out there with a wheelchair or even a stroller, it can be hard to get through that corner. So we want to get that signal cabinet out of the way for pedestrians. Same with Hy-Vee, acquiring that permanent right-of-way to move that sidewalk so that there isn't a bump out into 10th Street. The south quadrants of 10th Street will still come in from where they are currently, about between two and four feet, but it'll be a straight curb. So that curb will get extended to the nearest driveway, the end of that block, so that's a straight transition. There's not a bump out to plow around, not a bump out for a truck to get around, that sort of thing. So it's a little more convenient and still gives enough space for that truck-turning movements, as well as the ADA accommodations and the signal systems. And then that last picture, you'll see there's those blue boxes. That is additional permanent street right-of-way that Mindot will take over so that our signal systems are in Mindot right-of-way. So those would be the three areas of permanent acquisition. And then the next slide will have some pictures of, just some examples from the layout. So on the left-hand side, you'll see the North Highway 71 and 60 intersection. And here, you'll have one through lane, a right-turn lane, and a left-turn lane in each direction. So three, six lanes. I don't, we could put any number we want to it, between three and six, I guess. So you're gaining something there, a little bit. You'll see the urban core example. That's basically the, I'll call that the 11th Street to 6th Street area. And that will have the two through lanes with the center-left turn lane that's shared for directions. And so what that does is, you know, some of the other alternatives that Mindot looked at in the corridor study would require closing business access in the aspect of not being able to turn right, or not turn left at some areas, be right-in, right-out, where this alternative has that center-left turn lane so that all that business access could be maintained. The 12th Street example, you'll see there, kind of similar to the 71 intersection where you've got the through lanes, and then you've got a dedicated left-turn lane and right-turn lane as well. So just a couple examples from the layout there. And I think Steve has that layout, if we want to look at any of those a little bit further. But I'll just go through the municipal consent timeline here quickly. So towards the end of February here, we will send the municipal consent packet and the letter over to the city, and that will kick off the timeline. So once that letter's sent over, there's 15 days to schedule the public hearing, and then 30 days will be provided to the public for notice for that public hearing. So typically, what we like to do is schedule that public hearing the same time as a city council meeting. And so your council meetings start at 6:30. Typically, we, as Mindot, would have an open house beforehand, so maybe 4:00 to 6:30 or something, where the public can come in, look at the layout, ask questions. Then we'd have the public hearing with city council. That gives the public the opportunity to bring some stuff up. And then ideally, the city council would vote to accept or reject municipal consent at that time as well. So that is a quick overview of that timeline. There's some more details in that slide as well, if you're interested. And then I just want to talk about the next steps, kind of where we're at. Like I mentioned, we'll be going through that municipal consent process here this spring. And then summer to fall will be the detailed design time. We're really honing in on the design, the exact length of turn lanes, the exact structures for signal systems, all of that. And then the project will get turned in around Thanksgiving, with the project being let and put out for bids in spring of '25 with construction in 2025. So that was a quick overview of a lot of stuff, a lot of information. Steve's got the layout pulled up here, and so now I'll just open it back up to you guys if you have any questions or anything, you want to dive in deeper. And if there's something that you strongly oppose right now, I'd love to hear about it, and I'd love to hear your feedback if you like something or don't like something. Because ideally, we want to get to a spot where we can work through everything before we get to a public hearing. Right now is the time where we have to change things, just like we did with the street committee, where we can work through things and dive deeper into things.
Thank you for the presentation to start with. We appreciate you coming down in person and having this discussion. My first question is a financial one, and as part of this project, what if any municipal funds will be needed to complete this, and for what purposes?
Yeah, that's a great question. So with a signal system replacement, the cost is broke up between the legs of the intersection. So if we look at the 10th Street intersection, that's two city streets or two legs of the intersection, as well as two legs from Mindot. So the city would participate approximately 50% in that signal system cost. So that would be approximately, our estimate is right now, about $150,000. Yes. And that is for the signal system replacement only. Mindot has cost estimated, you know, what that cost is for us to buy that additional right-of-way and not do the bumpouts, and Mindot would cover all of that cost, so it is just the signal system itself. And just like the 6th Street intersection here, the county would participate 25% because Mindot owns the other three legs. And so that's, Mindot's cost participation policy, that's statewide. For example, a roundabout is the same way. It's based on the number of legs. So if a roundabout's put in and the city owns one street, it'd be that... Roundabouts are weird. There's different cost participation, so it's approximately 25%. Kind of can get closer to 30% based on medians and stuff like that, but that's kind of how it works.
Well, I have a strong opinion on that, but I won't share it all. But I think that'll be one of the top comments that you may get. I believe that the public has understood that we'd be responsible for 50%. I don't agree with it, and I would make comment to that point coming with the hearing. However, you know, we have to understand that, you know, changes need to happen, right? I think we all understand that. It's just the process and how that analogy was adopted when, you know, the traffic count on the city streets coming into it is probably 95% state traffic and 5% crossing traffic. And so it seems odd to me that the city would be responsible for the half the burden because of a street name. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you. It is, it's an interesting concept that Mindot's adopted. I will share that Mindot is currently reviewing their cost participation policy. I have no idea, you know, when that'll be done or how long that takes, but I know that's something that has been brought up, is doing more of a traffic-count-based participation rather than the number of legs. So it is something that is being looked at, but I don't know where that is in the process. So I do appreciate that feedback.
Yeah, and the street department went on record opposing paying any of that cost on 10th Street. If there wasn't a highway there, there would be no need for a stoplight. It's strictly the highway is the reason for the stoplight. I don't see where the city should be participating in that. I have a big problem with that. And I suppose I'm just beating a dead horse, but that's my opinion.
Yeah, it's a hard thing because it's a statewide policy, so it's not something that I myself control. But, you know, that point's completely valid, that the stoplight wouldn't be needed if the city street wasn't there. To play devil's advocate, we could argue both ways, that if the city street wasn't there, the signal wouldn't be needed on the highway either. So it's kind of a back-and-forth, and with that argument, no one wins, I guess. We both cause it. But I completely agree that, you know, it's a big cost for this city or any city. It's hard.
Well, from a fairness standpoint, even if we were to participate in it, I think it should be related to the traffic going on 10th Street and the traffic on the highway. And there's no comparison there.
Yep, and I completely agree with you. And I wish, you know, I wish it's something that I could wave my wand and change, but unfortunately, it's not something I can. So, you know, it's something we can have more conversations about. I don't know how flexible it is. You know, there's always gray areas, as with everything. So we can, we can talk more and, you know, see what there is we can do, but there will be some cost participation, 50% or maybe slightly under. It just kind of depends. I don't, I don't know the manual that's this thick on the back of my hand, you know, some of it's... There's multiple things that, you know, it's up to 50% or up to 100%. Unfortunately, like an intersection is not that case. The manual says per leg. So it's a, it's a hard deal, that's for sure.
And that's why it was the first question that we asked.
Getting the hard ones out of the way first.
Yeah.
That's mine. Yeah.
The, the process that you mentioned about them looking at it, right? And so if we sign the agreements and everything moves forward, what happens if legislators take action on behalf of Mindot to change those policies and it reverts to something different? It would be a heartbreak if we left half of it, 70, 25% on the table, if that legislation is changed prior to the agreement. And how long is that agreement for? Is that perpetual? Then we are, are we stuck by the bounds of the maintenance on those, on those traffic lights forever as well? So I think it's a bigger issue than just where we start. It's the continuing contract and how that's going to be interpolated in the future as well.
Yeah, that's a good question. Yeah, that's a good question, and, you know, that's something that I can look into personally and see where that's at. Like I said, it's the government, so it could be six months away, or it could be five years away, it's hard to tell. And so, you know, one thing with that, I will say, is that the, the cost participation is not tied to the municipal consent. The cost participation doesn't come till the very end of the project. So that is one piece, so that wouldn't be till Thanksgiving around there, that we'd really be talking about the cost participation and sending a formal agreement over with the maintenance of the signals. So, the city is responsible, any city's responsible for routine maintenance, like painting the signals or changing a bulb. However, as we talked in the street committee, if the signal system were to get hit, that's something that MINDOT's responsible for, so that's not something the city pays for in that instance. The city's only responsible for routine maintenance, like painting or bulbs.
Well, that's, thanks for sharing that, because we have snowplow trucks that hit things occasionally if a light bulb goes out. But, I'm kidding.
It's a valid point. They're big machines.
But, you know, I'm just, it's our job to look out for the costs that the city will incur now and in the future, and so this will be built under a MINDOT permit. Are you going to shut the lights off if we don't pay?
You know, that's a really good question, and I, I don't know that I have an answer for that. This, yeah, the signal systems are in bad shape.
I'm getting, I'm getting into the weeds, and I think I have made enough comments at this time. But, those are the type of things that'll be brought up, you know, at, at the hearing. And, you know, I know there's a council member that's very strongly opposed, there may be others that are not, and understand it's a deal of doing business in the city of Wyndham. So, I, I can see both points, parts of it. I would just be upset if it, if that change, if they are truly looking at it, and I would respect, or, if you could just follow up on that, see what kind of timeline they have, that would be much appreciated, because I, I think that's, not only our community, but communities going forward that are in projects.
Yeah, I can definitely look into that, and I just want to add that, you know, we've got a reconstruct coming in the 2030s, right now it's planned for 2032, and so, you know, the logical thing would be to wait to replace the signals with that reconstruct. However, unfortunately, the signal systems are past their life, and so, our engineers do have concerns with those foundations and systems in general. So I think the big thing is, we don't want to see one of those signals fall over, someone get hurt with it. And so, that would be my concern, is if the city didn't want to participate, is that something bad could happen, just because of the, the concerns around the condition of the signal.
Other, maybe different topics, Marv?
Well, I guess I would talk a little bit about, on traffic speed and the ability to make a left-hand turn, especially at Quick Trip to go to Worthington, or North Seventy-One, where you come onto Sixty and want to make a left-hand turn. And I see the solution to that is the roundabouts. I know there, there was discussion here about moving the forty-five mile an hour signs out, but that requires the study, and you didn't think that that was successful. I can't quite understand why, but you also agree that the roundabouts would slow the traffic down. So then, my question is, why don't we do roundabouts and not striping at this point? Do the roundabouts first, slow the traffic down, give us the ability to make left turns, and work on the striping later.
Yeah, those are really great points. I'll start with, hopefully I capture all of that, I'll start with the roundabout. So, the roundabout is planned for that 2032 reconstruct, and the reason that that's not included currently is really to give the community the ability to try this new striping out, to work out all those kinks, figure out where, you know, we need to make a right-turn lane work, or where a right-turn lane wasn't necessary, or, you know, nuances like that. And the issue with the roundabout is, my number might be a little off, but I'm going to say a roundabout's probably around three million dollars. So, you know, you're looking at six million dollars, and this project is about one-point-two million dollars, and that includes the signals, which are over half of that cost. So that's why the striping comes before the roundabouts. I know, we talked about that with the street committee and the safety concerns at those intersections, so, I know our management was looking at where those intersections would rank district-wide, and if different funds would be available, that those roundabouts could get built ahead of that reconstruct. So that is something we were looking at. You know, there's this thing called H-SIP funds, so that's Highway Safety Improvement Funds, specifically for intersections that have higher crash rates, more safety concerns. So we are looking at that as an option. I'm not sure, I haven't heard where those rank across the district, or where that's at. But yeah, roundabouts do slow down the traffic, so, you know, that traffic would have to slow down at Seventy-One. A semi or a car in general can't come through a roundabout at fifty miles an hour, like they can come through those intersections today, or even sixty miles an hour, like I'm sure you see out here. So that will definitely help, and that's the tricky part about the striping, is it will have a different feel once those roundabouts are in, because that traffic will be forced to slow down. And the, the speed study portion, so moving those forty-five mile an hours further out of town, specifically by the Quick Trip location, so further to the south. We looked at that, I went back to our traffic folks and talked to them, and so the only way that MINDOT changes a speed limit is through a speed study. And so what that means is, MINDOT goes out there with speed guns, surveys speed, and then documents that and takes the eighty-fifth percentile of speed that's being traveled. So if we were to do that out here, by that Quick Trip location, you're probably not seeing traffic going forty-five, because I think that's the concern, traffic's, you know, driving too fast. So you may see traffic going fifty-five, and maybe that's the average, fifty-eight. So then, based on that speed study, it requires the speed limit to get moved in to where traffic is still going fifty-five. So that's where, I don't think there'd be a benefit out here, it would really hurt the city, that those speed limit signs would get moved further in, rather than further out, because it's based on the traffic speed that is observed, so the actual speed that people are driving, unfortunately.
So, the study, the speed drives the study, not safety?
Correct. In that instance, speed does drive it. And so, safety plays a role in the other things we can do and the other things we can engineer, like roundabouts, striping, things like that, but, you know, the speed is determined initially off the design elements. If you have a curve that is rather sharp, obviously the speed's going to be decreased there because of the design restrictions and the design elements. However, in a speed study where it's, you know, essentially, it's a safe highway for a certain speed, in a municipality, the speed is determined based on that eighty-fifth percentile, being that there's not another design restriction. So, you know, for example, if there was a roundabout there, you wouldn't have the speed fifty-five, because that would be a design restriction. Or, trying to think of another example, but it, you know, it's things like that that would drive it, but in instance where it's prime design elements, the speed being driven out there. And so another thing, for example, that can help speed is narrowing lane widths, narrowing shoulders, providing more lighting, making people feel that they're coming into a city, which, you know, personally, if I drive out there, I feel like I'm coming into a city and I should slow down. Not sure why, traffic doesn't feel that way necessarily, but that's some things we do in some towns, is we extend the curb lines and shorten the shoulders, so that traffic gets that feeling like, oh, I am in town, I need to slow down. So there's, there's different things like that, that play a role.
Just one comment on, you know, coming into town from Worthington, like you're saying, I think, you know, locals realize we're coming into town. I think other people come in there and they don't realize that you have the people coming from Jackson that are trying to turn there, you have people coming out of Quick Trip and those businesses there trying to get back on the highway. So people are coming into town at a higher speed, thinking that, okay, I'm just coming into the edge of the town, not realizing I have all these other people trying to come in that are, and a lot of them do, just pull out, thinking that people are coming in at a lower speed, and then that's when, you know, accidents and things happen, or people have to pull over because they're coming in too fast and these people are pulling out. So I think, you know, like you said, it's just not knowing, and those of us that are aware of the situation, but the people that don't pass through as often are going that higher rate of speed, just not knowing what that traffic is up ahead.
Yeah, it's really based on that feeling element of how you feel when you drive through somewhere, that really restricts your speed or determines that, so, very good point about it being non-regular traffic that causes that.
Just down the road at Mountain Lake, I'm sure you're familiar, when there's traffic at an intersection, there are lights on the highway that flash. Has that been a thought of having those out there on the curb?
You know, that's a great point. It's not something I've heard of, and I don't know if you have.
No, and I can't speak for traffic engineers, but I know in communities where they do have them, I don't believe it's a proactive measure as much anymore, through their studies after installing them. I know they think they've had quite the success rate, you know, data-driven-wise, to have it be a, a common tool in our toolbox anymore. So if anything, I would say we're starting to see some of them go away. But that's something that we can follow up on with our traffic folks, too, so.
Yeah, I just want to add, that's perfectly said, and with the data, I know one thing that communities do sometimes is add the speed display signs, you know, that flash your speed. MINDOT can put those out for, I think it's two to four weeks, but if that's something the city wanted to finance permanently, I think there's measures to be able to do that. So that could be something the city and MINDOT could look into, is having that speed sign. So when you come into town and, you know, you've got the forty-five mile an hour plaque under it, and it flashes your speed that you're going sixty-three, it becomes an awareness that, shoot, I need to slow down. And the other big thing with that is enforcement, that's where we see the best results, is just enforcement out there. Even if tickets aren't being given, just the presence of enforcement can slow people down.
I don't think enforcement's the issue myself, but they can't be everywhere. So, Jim, do you think different? Were you going to talk?
I was thinking, what about cameras? Do, I could tell you right now, if you go down and sit in Hy-Vee and get a cup of coffee, you start counting the cars running them red lights, semis also, more, more semis than. To me, it would be dangerous even to drive out there when a semi's coming, because it's like they're colorblind or they, whatever. And also on the roundabouts like that, one by Worthington, it seems like every month there's an accident there somebody's involved in. And I don't know if it's too small, if it's, what, but yield, it's supposed to be yield, and a lot of the times it doesn't seem to.
Yeah, that's the hardest thing we see with traffic signs, is people get complacent with them, they see them once and they never seem to see them again. And, it's, it's a hard deal, especially these days with the phones, the, you know, the big screens that you have in your car, where you can change your music, you can practically watch YouTube on them these days. So, it's a hard deal. I know we see it statewide, where people just don't follow the directions that are out there. The common thing like the yield, the stop sign, the red light, it's, you know, it's pretty obvious that you should do those things, yet people don't, and at some point, unfortunately, we can't always engineer to fix that. There's a lot of things we can do, but so much of it just comes down to driver behavior, and I think that's the hardest thing to fix, unfortunately, so. Did I answer, kind of? Okay.
We can't always say, oh, that's exactly the answer.
Yep.
But, I will say, you are very well-versed.
Thank you.
And, and, yeah, very much so. Not that we're always going to agree, but that's what we're here for.
That's life as well.
Oh, Scott, good.
I just want to, before I get started, I want to say, this is not directed at you guys personally, or, and I hope we're not, we're thinking we're coming after you guys, but we're coming after MINDOT, because from what I'm hearing, now you want us to wait eight years before we really get anything big done around here. And Quick Trip's been open maybe a year and a half, somewhere around there, and the citizens of Wyndham, we've seen a lot of troubles come, and in the places, highways coming both directions, with cars, trucks, backed-up vehicles, people speeding through, I mean, we've, we've experienced it all, and it's, once, once you get the open mic and people coming down to talk to you, they're going to come after you guys. I mean, just, this is just a small sample of what we're going to have there, and my personal feeling, I wouldn't really want to, I have to live on that side of town, so I have to travel across there all the time. I tried to come down to the stoplights all the time, because you can't get through any other time, and then we had our business letting out people coming, that road gets so congested. And even on just a regular day, you go out there and you see, all the lanes are full. You get one car turning it backs up almost to the other stoplights, both directions, and people see the safety concerns coming out of there, and they're just, they're saying, what can we do to fix this? What can we do to help it? And everybody's just wondering what can we do? And from a small town point of view, we, we want to get it fixed, because we don't want nobody to get hurt out there at all, because, but we can see it happening, even if it doesn't happen yet, you can almost see somebody getting killed out there. And that's one thing, nobody wants nothing to happen about there, because we all love each other around here, but we just, it's something we got to get fixed, and now you're saying we got to wait eight years before we get done, and it's, it's just kind of mind-blowing, why does it's got to go so long before? Everybody talks safety, and safety's the main thing for both sides of the comments, and I think we got to pull together as a community and a, an entity to get this taken care of before something really does happen bad. But I do want to thank you guys for coming down, and it's nothing personal, you guys do a great job, and you guys are good at what you do, but we got to come together and get something done before the eight years is up. I don't think we have eight years before, we have a big write-up in a paper where something's going to happen. But thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate, appreciate your words, and just your opinion in general, all of your opinions. And so, I'll start with the, the why eight years. So, our district here, District Seven, is a thirteen-county area, and so, that's one thing, you know, it's hard to balance needs for thirteen counties, the number of communities we have, the number of state highway miles. We're currently going through this funding change, which is odd for me to say, as, you know, we've heard so much about Minnesota's surplus, but then, we at the DOT aren't seeing a surplus. We recently got our budget cut by over a hundred million dollars just in our district, and, you know, part of that was in our, it, it was in our ten-year plan. So that was a lot of changes that occurred. And so, part of that was the, it's, you know, it's great for the state of Minnesota, is the Blatnik Bridge. We're still figuring that out, we just got some money from the federal government that funded the Blatnik Bridge, so now we got money back in our budget. So within the last month, we've seen probably a two-hundred-million shift in just our ten-year budget for our thirteen counties. So we're really trying to balance where those projects end up, where the priorities are, looking at crash rates, critical crash rates. It's, you know, it's not a fun part of the job, I'll admit that, it's so hard to, you know, prioritize one community over the other, because quite frankly, we care about all of them. We don't want to see anyone get hurt anywhere on the state highway system, or the local highway system either. So, it becomes very challenging to, to choose that, and, you know, thankfully, that's not my job, I just get handed the project, but it is, it is data-driven, and so, the one thing, though, what to do to fix it, this is the first step in that, is striping this as the three-lane. That was the preferred alternative in the corridor study, based on the priorities of the community, which the first one was safety, and safety for all users, not just traffic, but pedestrians, bicyclists, you know, I've, I've... Um, you know, I've, I've walked out there and it's not the most comfortable spot to walk. Um, you're very close to traffic, traffic's moving fast. Um, you know, there's a lot going on out there. Um, another priority of the community was traffic flow, um, and maintaining business access. So, that's one thing that, the, the, striping the, the through lane with the left turn lanes and the right turn lanes, um, helps that traffic flow and maintains that access. Um, so this is the first step in trying that. Um, and the benefit of doing it with the signal reconstruct is that the signals are being constructed in a flexible manner. So, um, the signals will be put in so that they can handle three-lane traffic or, um, the through lane, left turn lane traffic, as well as, um, the four-lane traffic like you see out there currently. So, um, what, what'll happen is, you know, ideally, we'd re-stripe it in twenty-twenty-five, we'd come back in twenty-six to City Council, City Staff, um, do a public survey, hear what's been going on out there, look at our crash rates, look at all of that, and then determine, you know, we're at twenty-six, early parts of twenty-seven, what do we do for the next five years? Um, and so, it's a long-winded answer for, um, I don't have a good answer, and I wish I could, um, once again, do something, move it up, um, but it's something that is unfortunately out of my control. And so, I think it's a good point, and it's, it's a good reminder to me as a project manager to what I can do to push for the community, um, because, you know, back at MINDOT, I'm the community spokesperson every day. Um, so what I can do to push for an earlier change, or, um, looking at additional funding for things like roundabouts. Um, so I really appreciate that, that input.
Do we know how many, how many participants use that road per day?
You're testing my knowledge. Um, I want to say it's between nine and twelve thousand a day, um, is where my, my headspace is at, right around there.
That's more than we got in the city.
Yep. Yep, a lot of through traffic, and I think that's, you know, it's a hard part for a community like Wyndham and a corridor like sixty. You've got a lot of traffic, um, going from, just going through Wyndham, right? Great for businesses, um, that those people stop at, but it's a lot of traffic for your community to handle. Um, and a lot of safety concerns that the residents feel, um, because they're the ones out there continuously. Um, and so, it's, it's a lot of traffic.
One, I'm gonna follow up on that just quickly is, and from my point of view, is what I'm thankful for, is that we didn't bypass the city of Wyndham. And I think I can speak on behalf of our, most of our residents, that they're thankful we have the business that's coming through town. That's a huge benefit. And then, one last comment was, um, it's been a long time ago, I don't know the years when this discussion started. And the early twenty-thirties was the time mentioned on the final product. So, I mean, and I'm not disagreeing with you, Scott, but I'm saying that, that date was out there a sig, for a significant amount of time, anyway. I don't know the years, but, um, so. Other comments? Dennis, you up?
Well, yeah, I don't want to keep this going all night, but, um, uh, on what was done out there by Quick Trip, one thing that I could see that would be beneficial, there's a lot of, there's a lot of road surface that's not being utilized. And I think coming out of, people from Wyndham coming out of Quick Trip, going back to town, if there was a turn lane there, or a merge lane, coming out of Quick Trip, there's plenty of room for it, that would be beneficial to them guys that are coming seventy-five, eighty miles an hour into town. They give you, give you a fair chance. I know when I go out there, I look out and I gauge the speed that they're, they're coming, and I don't know if I'm gonna take off or not, you know? It's, if there was a, if there was a merge lane there, I think it'd be beneficial. It's something to think about.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point. Um, it's something I can bring up to our traffic people. I won't pretend to be a traffic engineer here and give you the statistics of merge lanes or, um, any of that, but it's definitely something I can, I can bring up with them and see if that's something that, um, the data would support as something beneficial. Um, it's hard, because, you know, I, I agree, I look out here, see the extra pavement, and I can agree that with the concept of it, it, it seems very beneficial, but, um, me sitting here, I could be completely overlooking something that our, our traffic engineer will notice. So, um, definitely something I can bring up with them, so thank you for that.
I'm about ready to ask for final comments, I'm getting close.
I have one question, now. Have you gotten a lot of feedback on the striping from Sixth out?
Yeah, we've, we've heard a good amount of feedback. Um, I guess, we, Anne, I don't know, um, if we've solicited for any of it, or, um, if it's just kind of feedback we've heard through council and the paper as well.
Yeah, and I feel like thus far, you know, if we look at where we've been, where we are, where we're going, you know, we've kind of piecemealed this together now as we've been talking here tonight. You know, it really was born out of the corridor study, um, really not all that long ago, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. I think we wrapped up in twenty-twenty-one. Um, and so, I think that's where the, the heavy bulk of the public input came from. Um, so it's where we looked at alternatives, got input on alternatives, and knew that we'd have a preferred one coming out of that. Um, as we start to kind of prep folks for construction here next year and the re-striping, we'll go back out with information and show, okay, here's how it looks now that we're kind of taking that alternative. We've further developed it, you know, in terms of the engineering line work on it. Um, it can really kind of hone in on more details versus just conceptual. So, there'll be more, um, more comments I'm sure we'll hear, some positive, some negative. It's, it's not uncommon from other communities, too. Um, so I would anticipate as we're talking to folks here this spring, summer, and starting to think a year out of construction, that, that we'll hear from folks on that, too. Um, it's a change. It's a change with a, a re-striping or configuration. Um, but, you know, even as the mayor's noted, these are conversations we've been having, you know, over years, everything with MINDOT is so far out, um, but it is part of this looking ahead to a full reconstruct. We talked about that project in the, the early twenty-thirties. It, that's a significant pavement fix, so we're working our way there. Um, and it's, it's a lot of dollars, but it's also a lot of time, and we were working through design details. So, we've got kind of that visual of what it's gonna look like. This is gonna kind of give it a test run, if you will, um, as we pilot that re-striping of what a future reconstruct might look like. And, um, I'm a visual person, so it's hard for me, too, when we see all this pavement, and even coming into town from the north, there's so much pavement. So, that feeling of, I can keep going fast, it's, it's wide open. It's not a sense of coming into town. So, I think as, I think about a future reconstruct in, in the early twenty-thirties, trying to, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna re-stripe, but then know that some of this pavement's gonna go away when we actually get to the real deal, too. So, as much as we'll see some things in real time, there will be additional changes, and it's kind of the part of this process here. So, um, have we heard much? Yes, I think, over the course of, I know, being involved in that corridor study with Steve back then, it's been a lot of dialogue, um, with folks, and all over the place. We still hear from some people that say, you should've bypassed this city years ago. So, you know, you'll hear, you'll hear the full gamut, and, and we know that, we know that going into it, so, um, but yeah, it, it's good conversation, it's good dialogue, so.
Well, I'll just add with that Quick Trip re-striping, um, we've been following the stuff in the news, and, um, Steve's passed emails on to us and stuff like that. Um, but, we, there we go, I lost my train of thought there. Um, so, the one thing we've really been monitoring is the crash rates. Um, you know, we get a notification anytime a crash happens, um, our traffic engineers look at it, they read the report, um, they categorize it and look at that. Um, so that's something we've been watching very closely is the crashes. Um, and then the other thing I want to add is, we will be at the, the Home and Farm Show March ninth, um, so we'll have our layout there, we'll have our full team there, um, we'll have a presentation slot where we'll, um, run through, you know, where we've been, where we're going, um, for the public. And so, um, that'll be another good time for us to, to hear about stuff.
That's great, I'm glad you mentioned that. Yeah, super. Uh, any last comments? Otherwise, I do have one more item. Um, we have, uh, our city engineer, uh, for our streets, uh, Dan Van Scapin's here. And I was just curious if we could ask Dan, do you have any questions or comments, um, that you would like to make or questions to ask?
I was actually at the meeting for the nineteen, I was like, we'll do this with the city and other staff. I brought all the same items I had. The only one I was just gonna throw out is...
Thanks for bringing that up, Dan. Um, so, that was, you know, some miscommunication between MINDOT not thinking, um, about all the pavement we'll have out here. Um, so I'm sorry that you guys have been working on that so much. Um, and so, it was just something that, you know, we got balls in a lot of courts, um, it's a lot, it's hard to track everything. And, um, to be quite honestly, I took this project over, um, last March or so. Um, so as we've developed the layout, that's something that we noticed was that right turn lane. Um, and so, the reason it's not, there's, the pavement's out here for it to be striped, it doesn't need to be constructed. Um, but the thing is, we don't want to strike that right turn lane right now, that the public perceives Dollar General gets a right turn lane. Um, and you know, a local business down the street says, why is my business not important enough to get a right turn lane? Um, and so that's, that's why it's not being striped until that city street pavement is in place. So, I'm, I'm sorry you guys have been working on that.
And, and I, we've had this conversation before, you know, but just for everybody's else's edification, you know, we've spent tens of thousands of dollars engineering this several different ways, shall we say, to match what MINDOT has asked us to do as far as that turn lane, um, as far as our street going into the new turn lane that was to be built. And I know I had this conversation with Matt, too, that, you know, there's yet another change now that's gonna have to be engineered, we're gonna have to work something out on a MINDOT cost share, because this has really gone far past the scope of where it was originally envisioned, so. But that's a comment we'll have to have with those folks.
Yeah, and I, I can't remember where we ended up with the funding piece of it and the time that's already been spent. Um, I can't recall what was worked out there. Um, but yeah, the, the future is definitely something that we've gotta, you know, MINDOT's gotta be a good partner in it, that's for sure. Um, because, quite honestly, that, us missing, that wasn't good partnering. Um, we, it, it got fumbled, so, um, I'm really sorry for that, but I, I'm hopeful that we can fix that in the future.
What have we invested in that, Steve? Approximately?
I think we're pretty close to almost fifty, aren't we, Dan? Oh, he said we're closer to seventy, that we've spent on that. We had, had budgeted a hundred and eighty for the whole thing, which included our pa, or a hundred and sixty that included our paving. But just because of the changes in the engineering, it would go, again, this isn't Mary or Anne's fault here, but, you know, it got engineered, then it gets sent to MINDOT Mankato, they say, okay, do it, then it goes to MINDOT in St. Paul. They said, do it different, then it comes back to Dan, it gets redone again with the fixes, and it goes back to MINDOT District Seven. They said, well, why in the heck did you do it this way? Well, we're told to do it this way. Well, then it just keeps going around and around, and Dan could share with you how, how many times it got redesigned. And so, this cul-de-sac that was gonna cost, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand or a hundred and sixty thousand total, we've spent between fifty and seventy now on, just on engineering changes, and we haven't put a single piece of, you know, gravel or concrete into the ground, and we're well beyond the scope for this is. And the, you know, cost share from MINDOT actually was going to come from them placing that turn lane, and now it's, oh, sorry, we don't need that, and redesign it again. We're not real happy with where we're sitting, but I shared that with Matt before, so.
Well, I think that's a good time to bring this up again, because it almost matches the cost of the streetlights.
Funny enough, I was preparing for that in my head. You know, I think it's not a decision I can make, and I don't want to sit here and give you any false hope that there's something we can do. Um, but I can say that it's something I can look at with our management and see, um, you know, if there's a gray area where MINDOT can cost-participate more, um, to do, decrease something, um, for the city. Um, and I won't pretend that I know what that is right now, um, but it's something I can bring up with them and see what we can do, because, um, it was an unfortunate event that that happened, and it's not a consolation prize, but Steve or Dan, if it makes you feel better, the same thing happens with us in Mankato on our own projects. We send it up to Central Office, they say, make this change, it gets redesigned, send it back down. Our engineers say, no, design it this way. We do it again, and it's, it's a circle. So, we, we also go through that internally. I didn't think it would, but I thought I'd share at least that. It's not uncommon.
Okay, well, you, yeah, Steve will share his solution in the future with you.
I'd appreciate that. Maybe someday I can implement that change, I don't know.
Okay, last call. Marv?
I just thought of one more question, because I see our fire chief sitting in the back row. When we're striped down to single lane going each way, does emergency services have the ability to pass through in heavy traffic?
I would, I would think so, um, especially, um, I don't know the widths out here currently, but as we've talked about before, there's a lot of pavement out here, so, um, the width striped, there's still gonna be large shoulders that traffic can pull over to. Um, the benefit is, you know, that center-left turn lane, that's a space. Um, it's, I, I, I won't pretend I know how to navigate an ambulance or a fire truck, um, but you know, there is still space out there that traffic should move over if they decide to follow that traffic rule, I guess. Um, it's, there should be space out here, but that's definitely something we can talk more about. And, um, it's a good point with, um, having EMS here, is that, um, one thing with the new signal systems, we should have a conversation about at some point, is, um, getting the, I don't know if you have the technology in your equipment that can change the light, um, but MINDOT can put in that equipment that is at the light, so, you know, there's some waves that get passed from the equipment to the signal that, instead of, you know, having to go through a red light, that, that light can get turned or get traffic through there. Um, so that's something that we should talk about at some point, is if that's something you guys would be interested in being in that signal system.
I think it would be a good conversation to have. Right now, the way, the way the traffic is from the three-lane that we have, it's terrible, because people don't know where to go, so they don't go anywhere. And there's been multiple times that we've been stuck behind fifteen, eighteen vehicles, and we can't get through it. It's, it is terrible right now.
Yeah, and that's, that's what's really hard about the four lanes out there, is, you know, if I'm in that left lane, do I get in the right lane? Where does the right lane traffic go? Um, and that confusion, so I could see how that could very easily...
The four lane was great.
Oh, okay. It's the three lane.
The three lane we have right now is terrible.
Okay, so, right.
The four lane was great, because everybody did move over.
Okay.
And we had the center of the road that we could go.
Yeah.
But the way it is now, we're, we're stuck in traffic more than we're getting through.
Do you think it's at the signal specifically, or do you think, um, it's where all that extra pavement is, and people don't know what they can use or what they can't use?
It's from the signal going out of town to quicker.
Okay.
Everything that you've changed.
Yep.
Is terrible. And, and it is good to hear that you'll be at the Farm and Home Show, because so will I. I can come over and look at this, and we can talk through it a little more in depth at that point.
Yes, yeah, um, Home and Farm Show or not, I'd love to talk and, and hear about that, and just learn more about that, so, I appreciate that.
Are you good, Marv? All right, very good. Good, good comments. Okay, with that, uh, I think we're done with this topic, and thank you very much, Mary and Anne.
Thank you all, and, um, I'll just walk around. Steve, you've already got one, but I'll just give a business card. Steve, you've already got one, but I'll just give a business card. So if things come up or there's something you think about when you get home tonight, just give me a call, send me an email, and we can talk through it.
Okay, Josh, you're going to be up next. Let me see. Yes, there he is. So what's your opinion on the roads? No, I'm kidding.
Well, safety was a big topic, which we can cover a little bit of that here. I'll, I'll, I'll keep my opinion until our public hearings maybe. Josh Peterson, Bank Midwest Insurance, thank you for having me here tonight. On behalf of Bank Midwest, myself, we, we appreciate the business and the continued relationship serving the city of Wyndham. I won't keep this real long, but you certainly interrupt me, ask questions at any point if you'd like to. Initially, I'll just say that as far, well, we'll just step in. Basically, if you look at my initial letter here, just introducing what I'm going to talk a little bit about to show you a comparison between last year and this year as far as premium basis, as well as premium for the overall policies that we write for the city. Some of those, majority of, are with the League of Minnesota Cities. We also do have a boiler and machinery policy that we write with Travelers. Additionally, we have some bonds that we write with a CNA Surety Company, but I'll cover those. Initially, just to make you aware, also, I mean, you may be aware, the dividend, there was a dividend declared by the League of Minnesota Cities, excuse me, the League of Minnesota Cities for 2023. The city of Wyndham received $8,254 for that dividend. If you want to move to the next page, we can kind of dig into some of the, the numbers here. And like I said, I'll give you a high level on this, certainly ask me questions if you like. But really, we've got a comparison of '23 and '24, kind of what our premium is derived from, whether that's property liability, et cetera, and then kind of what, what the current premium is. And if you take a look at this, you can see, well, actually, the general trend that you're going to see is that the rates, the premiums are down, which is not something I'm saying all that often lately. But the League of Minnesota Cities is a more, a little more unique than just your standard insurance carriers out there. And so they've actually, for the most part, all of their, their rates are decreasing right now, which has been great for us. In addition to that, I think Stephen mentioned earlier again, the, the topic of safety, our claims history, kind of the way we conduct ourselves, the way we do things, those are all having an impact because we've seen definitely some improvements to our liability modification factors, as well as our auto liability factors. So what that's telling us is that we're doing a really good job as far as claims go, and, and we're being rewarded for that somewhat. So if you look, again, we can talk about all these coverages, these are all through the League of Minnesota Cities. If you scroll down just a little bit further, you can see our totals. I should have bolded those. But, you know, last year, we ended up at 267, 416. This year, we're 255, 183. So we have seen a bit of a decrease there, obviously on the side of the league. Like I said, a number of factors that come into play with that, including some adjustments to our overall property limits that we work on every year to, to determine. I know that with some projects and things going on, we'll probably see that rising again a little bit for next year. But if we, if we move over to the next page, here's our equipment breakdown, and this is our Travelers. This would be the one where we're not seeing a decrease. It's a, but we're seeing a slight premium increase. And by slight, generally, year over year, Travelers is, their rate increases, and I guess what would be considered overly excessive right now. So we do see a little bit of a jump there. But then as you move down to the bottom, overall, between the equipment breakdown and all the League of Minnesota Cities policies, we're down a little over $8,000 in total premium. The next page, and this one is a couple of things going on here. So this is our work comp. And if you look on, I'll just explain this briefly. So work comp, again, is going to look at factors. It's going to, it's going to throw out the most recent year and then look at the three years prior to that. So your premium for work comp, or the city's premium, I should say, is based on our claim history as, as well as the payouts from 2020, '21, and '22. In 2019, maybe some of you will remember, there was, we had a significant work comp claim paying out from that time that continues to pay out. But that has fallen off our, the determination for our experience mod factor, which basically, as you can see here, I'm getting a little into the weeds there, but you can see we, our experience mod factor went from a .95 to a .60, which is, as you can see by the premium difference to the right, a little over $78,000. That is a big result of that major claim falling off the books, as well as good history kind of in the last, those, those years following it. You can see, I mean, 2023, if you go down a little bit on that, you can see kind of what total costs were paid out in those years for work comp claims. 2023 is, we've had a few payouts there that will, we'll see the results of that at some point, but certainly I don't anticipate it to be as drastic as the 2019 experience mod that we were dealing with. That, overall, is really generally the, our coverages between our property, our liability, our work comp, and any bond type coverage that we have. Do you have questions on any of those things at all, or concerns, or anything?
Counsel, any questions? Clarifications? Marv?
If my memory serves me correct, one of the major drivers for the Travelers part was the termin and that's been just decommissioned. Has that had an impact?
So we dish, you know, that's a good question, Marv. I'd have to look at, it, it has had some impact, but I think with, between that and overall, some of the, you know, the property adjustments being made, not that it's been offset, I mean, yes, it makes a difference. Has it been significant? Not overall, based on where the environment is now.
Other comments?
If, if there are no further questions, a couple of things as far as action that needs to be taken from the council. One of those is statutory tort limits. I'll just read this for you. Now, the city is currently elected to not waive the statutory tort limit of 500,000 per claimant. Choosing not to waive the statutory tort limit, the city's liability is limited by the statute, no more than 500,000 per claimant and 1.5 million per occurrence. So the city has the option to waive those limits and be exposed for, you know, obviously a higher potential settlement or keep those in place as a protection. And then there's always potential that the city could negotiate if things went to something. But historically, the city of Wyndham has opted to leave the statutory limits in place. And so I'd be asking for a vote on that.
Can we just do that one first?
Sure.
While it's clear, everybody understand that? That, I guess that I hope is still in your position? So there'd be a motion in order to leave the same and, pardon me?
No.
Yeah, not waive the statutory limit.
I would make that motion to not waive the statutory limit.
And I would second.
Motion by Jenny, second by Marv, to not waive the statutory limit? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next, it's customary, I always quote additional or excess liability. Historically, the city has opted not to take that. But I did quote a million dollar additional liability, which comes with a price of $19,065 to add that additional million dollars of liability. So in this case, it would be whether or not you would like to accept or reject an additional million dollars in liability coverage.
Does a council wish to reject that coverage?
I, a motion that the city rejects that coverage.
I'll second it.
Motion by Dennis, second by Scott, to reject the coverage for 2024. Any discussion? All in favor, signify. Marv?
Would that be agreeable with the city administrator?
I believe every year that I've been with the city, we've taken this same action. So I would suggest that you continue to do that.
Based on Steve's recommendation. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And do we need to accept the renewal for 2024, or is that just a budget? You're good? Okay.
And I have nothing further unless anybody else has anything additional. Thank you. And again, I appreciate you having me here tonight and allowing me to continue being your agent of record for your insurance. Thank you very much.
Just wanted to say, thanks for doing this stuff for us. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Josh. Okay, next on the list, ratification of fire department elections. Ben is going to take the stage. I'd also like a report on the township election. I probably missed that. Or not election. Did you have anybody at your? Three? Okay, never mind.
Sorry about that. We held our annual fire department elections back on February 1st. With the results of our elections, we have the four positions that we're asking for you guys to approve tonight. I'll start with my third assistant, Kristen Forth. She's been on the department for 13 years. She's firefighter one and two certified. She's in good standings with the community and the department. She made 100% of all the fire drills last year, 73% of all calls, and 47% of our miscellaneous calls. Second position, second assistant position. We had our previous second assistant decided not to run this year, so we have a, a new one in at, at this, Jason Crumweedy. He's been on the department for over eight years. He's firefighter one, two certified. He's in good standings with the community and the department. He made 79% of all fire calls last year, or fire drills, I'm sorry, 64% of all calls and 22% of the miscellaneous. Next is for our first assistant, Jordan Bussa. He's been on the department for over 18 years. He's a, he's firefighter one and two certified. He's in good standings with the community and the department. He made 100% of all fire drills, 97% of the calls, and 61% of the miscellaneous. And for fire chief is myself. I've been on the department for over 15 years. I am certified firefighter one and two, good standings with the community and the department. I made 100% of the fire call, fire drills, 99% of the fire calls, and 97% of the miscellaneous calls and events.
I don't know if we can handle that 1% and 3% missing.
I'll try to do better.
You know, I'm joking, Ben. You put a lot of time in. Your vehicle's over there all the time.
It knows, it knows how to get there.
It knows how to get there. Okay, council, wish to take action on approving the chiefs for the 20, is this called the 2024?
Ratification 2024.
For action. Okay.
I would make the motion to approve the ratification of the fire department election.
I'll second it.
Motion by Marv, second by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Ben?
I will give you a quick little update on our meeting with the fire district. I don't have those notes with me. But we did have three members of the fire district show up for that meeting. We, we just kind of go through our, our previous year in review, how many calls we had inside of town, outside of town, you know, some of the more notable calls, that type of stuff. We did, we go through the equipment with the trucks, or the equipment with the, with those guys, the condition of it, if we've had any major breakdowns, that type of stuff, the, the schedule on when these pieces of equipment are scheduled to be replaced and that type of stuff. We did talk with them about some grant opportunities that we'd like them to pursue on with the replacement of our unit 26, which is our second tanker. They seemed very interested in it. I don't know that, I have, myself, I haven't heard anything back, and I don't know that Steve has yet either, but I know they were in the process of putting a meeting together to, they have their annual meeting or whatever they do as well, and they were going to add that to their agenda and discuss that and get back to us as well, so.
All right, thank you for that. Yep, Scott?
Quick question. Did you talk to them about a ladder truck for the new hospital type thing that we're going to need to reach some of that tall, taller aspects of the hospital once it gets built?
We, we did talk about, about that truck a little bit as well. Right now, I, I don't want to say it's, it's not a priority because it is, but it's a little bit lower on the list for me right now. Right now, our, our main objective is to get that grassland truck replaced and that tanker replaced. And hopefully in the next few years, I'll say, that we can replace unit 26 with a platform truck of some sort, yes.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you and thank you for your service. 2023 annual report. Steve?
Yeah, just sent out separately from the packet was the 2023 annual report with all the statistics from the departments and whatnot. That was, that was put out, yes, that was put out on, on the website and everything. There's a lot of good information in there. And thank you to all the departments for putting those together. And you can probably look and see, the narratives have, have improved. Mr. Grunig, several years ago, thought we could do better in the narratives. Police always did a really great job. Now they're kind of, again, continuing to be the leaders, but other, other people are starting to try to catch up. So I don't think they're going to catch Scott and his department, but they're doing a really good job with it. And it is good information. It, it kind of helps tell the story, just the numbers, too. So, so that was put in the packet, so. It's just for information, so.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
Citywide cleanup. Do we have a volunteer to head that one?
Don't think we need one.
Okay.
Hopefully.
All right.
All right, so staff has reached out to Hometown Sanitation, the memo in your packet. They've got three dates that would work for them. These are also dates, I believe, that the landfill is open so that people could take things there if they so chose. April 6th, May 18th, and June 15th are the three dates that Hometown has available. So I guess we're looking for any of your input and guidance on what date you think would be the most advantageous to, to do that. I know there's always events here and there, whether it's.
Graduation.
Graduations, or whether it's two, you know, April 6th is it too early? Because maybe there, you know, you could still have snow, or, you know, June may be too late because graduations are over with, you know? So again, that's why we're bringing it up to you guys. There is only the one date in May, so. I know there was some talk about doing it in the fall, but that kind of has subsided, so these are the dates that we're providing you.
What does the council want? I'd picked a middle one, but.
I think I almost heard a recommendation for May 18th.
Almost.
Almost.
I'll make a recommendation for May 18th.
Okay. So we just need, is that consensus?
Is that a, yeah, we, well, we're going to set it. Is that a, yeah, we, well, we're going to set it.
Sure.
That was to set it.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'd second it.
I'm going to take Marv's, he was almost heard a recommendation.
Okay.
So we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And then there was a question also on the mattress.
Couple, a couple other ones. So we did talk with the county, they would be willing to do the curb-side mattress pickup again, and that's a process where you have to come and buy a tag from the city. Typically, the city had been doing some kind of subsidy on that to help reduce the cost to the residents. The box, the county will provide box ring pickup for additional $2 apiece, so it went, they went from $15 to $17. And then, as the memo notes, last year, we did do a subsidy of $7. So it was $8 to the resident, $7 the city covered. Now, with the $17 price from the county, do you want to keep the subsidy then? Well, first, do we want to continue the subsidy for mattresses? And then, if so, what's the amount of that subsidy, and then will there be a limit on how many tags that you'll subsidize? So those are kind of the questions, and I believe the last year, we did, do you remember if it was two or three, two tags? It was subsidy applied to two tags per household, so. And I know, again, there was some thought on that, so.
Well, a question I have is, why the intent on the mattresses? Because they're a big bulky item, or is it a fire hazard, or is it a, is there?
Just a big bulky item type of thing, and the county has a program that will collect the mattresses, and in their event, it will provide that service, and it would keep it out of the, from, out of Hometown having to do it, and the county likes to have it, so they have them all in one spot, and can kind of deal with them that way, so.
Okay. I had a freezer that I'd go, I thought maybe you could shift it.
Sleep mat.
Yeah, there you go. What's the county think?
Does, does that fund have the money to do the subsidy?
Yeah, we came out good last year. You know, last year was kind of the first year of trying that, limiting the number of bulky items placed on the curb, because there had been some abuses of that. I, from what I understand, from Hometown, we debriefed, and that went very well. But in looking at statistics that were in the annual report, and that was in the council stuff, our tonnage that we collected was down considerably, which one would expect. We didn't have a lot of business at, we had two drop-off sites for smaller items. We'll get to that one yet, but we didn't have a ton of, I shouldn't say that, we didn't have a lot of business at some of those, so those costs weren't as high as we expected. So we did come out okay with our budget, we actually came in under budget, so if you want to do the mattress subsidy, again, I would say we can certainly afford to do that, and if you wanted to up it by a dollar or something to cover, keep covering that half of the cost, you could certainly do that and be within budget, because, you know, we collect just several hundred of these, and an extra dollar or two is not going to break that budget, so.
I would make a motion to raise the subsidy to $8 and continue to do it this year.
I'll second that. Okay, motion has been made by Marv, second by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the motion passes.
Okay, and then, just the last thing, I really don't need a motion on this, but we're just to let you know, because of the traffic, or lack of traffic that we had at the two drop-off sites, the recommendation is to go to one drop-off site, and so, instead of having it at Teagle's Park and over at the arena, we're talking about just doing it in Teagle's Park, because we've got a good way of to flow traffic through there, there's enough room, so if there are multiple cars, there's room for a queue there and that kind of thing, so. So that's the recommendation, is that we're just going to go to one site. Hometown was good with that, we talked about a department head meeting, that seemed to be consensus that that would work. So we would do the same program that we did last year with the 10 items on the curb, and then the mattress pickup by tag, and then there's drop-off that individuals can bring stuff, city residents can bring things to that drop-off site, which will be monitored, and then they can drop it off there, and then we'll have it hauled away and rolled away that way, so. And that will be up at Teagle's Park, so.
Is that unlimited?
Yep. Yep, there's not, not account limit, no.
No, okay. Well, I'd recommend that, again. Yeah, we should do it with one location.
That's what, that's what we're planning on doing, so, unless we heard differently from you folks, that you thought we would, should have two, one on each side of town, but our recommendation is to do, do the one and make, see how that worked. Again, we're still kind of working our way through this.
Does anybody disagree with that? Hearing none, let's go with your recommendation. Okay.
And then, just to let you know, the county will be doing a recycling event, they will be doing recycling for electronics and appliances prior to our event. So when those dates are set, they will be advertising that, so there is that opportunity for citizens to bring things to the county recycling event.
And can we participate some way to let the city know? Can, I mean, can we help advertise and do whatever?
Yep.
Yeah, great. Okay, sounds good. Additional mayor appointments. I think I just had one tonight. Mike, you got to get to the next slide, because I can't remember, although I printed it.
Matt Miller.
Matt Miller. Recommending Matt Miller here for the planning commission, that was a recommendation I actually got from the planning, from Andy, so I'd appreciate your concurrence on that, if the council wished to take action.
I'd make a motion to accept the mayor's recommendation of Matt Miller to the planning
Thank you, Scott, for that quick response, and thank you, Jim. And this is for a term that expires, actually, it was, yes, it was a partial term, so, okay. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, new business. Anything, Steve, that came up? Okay, old business. The only thing I had was I haven't seen anybody ice fishing on Cottonwood Lake recently. Okay, council comments? Jim?
Nothing.
All right, Marv?
Whatever, I would just thank everybody that was involved in putting that annual report together, all the good text. I challenge everybody to read it, because there's something you didn't know in every one of those different reports. So, like, the fact that the library sees 100 visitors on average per day, that's, I didn't know that. So the challenge is to read that. I know Andy felt bad that planning and zoning doesn't have enough frills to write about, but he still did a good job, and, and, so, thanks to everybody putting together, and to these, to Denise for putting it all together in the package, and.
Great comment. Scott?
Just want to say, think of, with the, all the stuff going on in this world right now, and our country, our small city, and our bigger cities, think of our law enforcement center, our EMTs, and everybody else that helped protect us and take care of us, that with the tragedies that has happened, put them in your thoughts and prayers, because they sure do need it right now. And then, with the weather getting so nice out, and we have a spring cleanup established now, help your neighbors if they can't help clean up their yards and stuff like that, because we want to make Wyndham a nice little community to live in, and if you've got stuff in your yard, or somebody else's yard that's blowing around the whole neighborhood, it doesn't take too long just to bend over and pick it up. If you just, everybody picks up one piece of stuff, pretty soon, we got it all taken care of. So I just want to say thank you to the EMTs and the police officers, and everybody that takes care of us, and thank you very much.
Dennis, I'm going to let you go next.
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Ladies last tonight.
I don't have anything tonight.
Really? All right. Steve?
I just echo what Marv said, thanks to all the department heads for putting the report together, and Scott's comments about law enforcement, sure, thank you for all that they do for the community, and fire department, and the EMTs, and so.
And I'm going to thank you, Steve, for putting that together and doing the interview with the citizen, that information, I think that was very helpful for some highlights, so, appreciate that, and that's it. We're adjourned, Ben, I must consent.